Good afternoon and welcome to our afternoon session, Tuesday, May 10th, 2022. It's our budget hearing. And with that, let's do a roll call, please.
Supervisor Christie.
Here.
Supervisor Grujova.
Here.
Supervisor Heinz. Supervisor Heinz. Supervisor Heinz? I think he's just joining. Somebody is showing, he's there. Yeah. Hello Supervisor Heinz? Supervisor Scott.
Here.
Chair Bronson.
Here.
Supervisor Heinz, are you connected? Let the record show, all members are present. Supervisor Heinz is showing, he's connected.
All right. And before we go to the, well, let's do the Pledge of Allegiance and then to be led by Supervisor Christie with a land acknowledgement statement, which will be read by Supervisor Scott.
Please stand and join me for our pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands our nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. And just to take a moment of personal privilege, I don't know if any of you have been following what was going on in the Ukraine, but there is a very special person, well, a very special beast I want to acknowledge, and that's Patron, the bomb-sniffing dog. I don't know if you've seen him on the internet, but he has saved many people's lives and found bombs. And I don't think we have any of those at our PAC facility, but we certainly have many that are adoptable. So if you're looking for your furry friend, I suggest you head over to PAC. And with that...
Do you want me to do the land acknowledgement?
Oh, I'm sorry. We didn't do the land acknowledgement. Yeah, go ahead.
On behalf of Pima County residents, we honor the tribal nations who have served as caretakers of this land from time immemorial and respectfully acknowledge the ancestral homelands of the Tahuana Autumn Nation and the multi-millennial presence of the Pascoyaki tribe within Pima County. Consistent with Pima County's commitment to diversity and inclusion, we strive toward building equal partner relationships with Arizona's tribal nations.
Thank you Supervisor Scott. And with that, we'll proceed with the budget hearings. We're on department budget presentation. First, but first one up is analytics and data governance. Who's presenting?
Hi.
And state your name for the record and your title.
Yes, my name is Scott Zufelt. I'm the interim director for analytics and data governance. Thank you. Good afternoon, Chair Bronson, members of the board, and Ms. Lesher. As I stated, my name is Scott Zufelt, interim director, and I'm here to tell you a little bit about analytics and data governance. We're one of the newer departments. We were formed in 2018, and we are here to provide Pima County with reliable information, analysis, and insights that will enhance the quality and delivery of the county's services. So to do that, we created a comprehensive data strategy, and it had three pillars. First pillar being data acquisition, getting the data from the source systems. The second pillar being data warehousing, which included data cleansing, storing, and preparation. And the third part of the third pillar was reporting. So we tackled that in a different order than what I just enumerated to you. We first established some reporting platforms. We created a platform with SAP business objects, and we've created over 300 reports in those business objects platform. We also implemented Microsoft Power BI. So those, both of those systems were here on premises, and in Microsoft Power BI, we have over 150 interactive reports. These reports allow the county users, the people in all the departments, to interact with the data and then do analysis on screen without having to dump it down to their computers and then use Excel, manually manipulate it, and do those things. So the second part of our data strategy, so we first did the reporting, then the second part was focusing on getting the data into a place where we could use it. And for this, I do have to give a big thank you to Mr. Dan Hunt and the IT team. They helped us out by implementing a platform for our data acquisition. So in doing so, we were able to access many of the enterprise systems that we have here in the county. So CGI, Advantage, Maximo, planning and budgeting, so that we get all of the financial data, we pull that in, and then we implemented the middle part of the strategy, which was the data warehouse. So for that data warehouse, we went to the cloud. ADG chose to implement Snowflake. Snowflake is an agnostic cloud data platform. It is fully HIPAA compliant. It is PCI certified, and is also FedRAMP certified. So that data that we load into that platform is secure as we can make it. So I just want to give you some recent examples of what we do as a department. We are not super well-known. We've not been around forever, but we want to let folks know that we are here to collaborate with them. We have worked, I'm going to give you three examples. So recently, we just finished working with the Office of Emergency Management. I always get the acronym backwards. So the Office of Emergency Management, because the second one is OME, so the first one is OEM. We created for them a series of reports. So what they had was a manual process to gather data to create an emergency contact list in case of emergencies, a catastrophic emergency. So we created both static reports that they could print out, and we also created interactive reports for the departments and for that department to use to look up key personnel. We also created an employee contact list so that we had a place to go to find where employees were housed. So if they were assigned a building, location, and office space, we knew who was supposed to be on premises during any kind of catastrophic event. So the second example was the medical examiner. We just started working with them. So we are taking their data, we're onboarding their data, and we're allowing them to create their own reports. So that we first create some reports for some departments and some other departments that have some technical expertise. We do some additional training, and we allow them to create reports, and then we will disseminate that on the platform. And the third example that you heard of earlier today was with Justice Services. So we are in the process of creating a justice data warehouse specifically for them to house that data. It will be segregated from the other data, and this data is coming from the sheriff. So we pull data from many other places. We pull data from the sheriff. Health Department gives us some data. We get data from ADP. So that's another cloud source. That's where all of our HR data is. We get some NeoGov data, which is where our recruiting data comes from. We get data from the city of Tucson for water billing and sewer billing. We pull census data, and we also pull information from the Bureau of Labor Statistics. So we have, again, some of those departments that are technically savvy, like the GIS division within ITD that uses Power BI for some of their own reporting about their system, but they don't display GIS reports on it because that's not what that platform is for. It's just for analytics, for things that we do here within the county. So some of the issues that we run across here at the county is, well, let me back up for a second. The issue that we run across in ADG is very similar to what we have in many other departments in the county. We have issues with staffing, and those issues are not unique to us, but they are a little different than what we experienced with some of the other county departments. We, ADG, are a very technical department, just like IT, so we require technically savvy people that are in high demand across the country. So we, a recent example of an issue for us is we had tried to hire some business intelligence analysts, and we pulled a list of 11 candidates. Of those 11 candidates, nine of those candidates are from east of the Mississippi. So many of those are unwilling and unable to move to Tucson to relocate here to work for us. So that does cause us a different type of issue, rather than just one of pay, which is one of the issues that we get, but the issue of a limited pool of resources with here in Tucson. So what are we going to do? How do we make it better? We will continue to, we will continue to use our comprehensive data strategy. So everything that we do, we move forward in a singular direction. We don't try to go out and, and create something new every time. We have created a strategy. So whenever we onboard a data source, it follows that strategy. We use the tools that we have. We warehouse the data, and we use the reporting platforms that we have to get that data out. So we continue to use those tools, and we will continue to be front and center with the reporting needs for the county. Our other major concern for this coming fiscal year is that we are going to be in the midst of the ERP replacement, as many of the central service departments that we have here at the county. That ERP system that we're going to replace is the financial, HR, budget, payroll, work management, procurement, reporting, you name it. It's, everything is in it except for permitting. So we will be one of many departments that are working on this huge endeavor for the next two and a half to three years. As you may notice in the budget presentation, we were, we had asked for an increase of personnel. We were given the personnel last year, early in the year, for additional reporting capabilities. So we worked with county staff and county administration to focus what we had to do last year. So one of the major things that we did and we produced with the help of GMI, with IT and communications, was the Pima Recovers website. So that is one of our first, well, that is the county's first transparency portal. So it is available to any constituent in the county to go look at it, to see where our federal coronavirus dollars are being spent. So with that, I will conclude and here to answer any questions that you may have.
Well, it's certainly fascinating, and we need, we certainly need it. So hope you are successful in accomplishing everything you say you want, Supervisor.
Can we get periodic updates on the, on the progress of the ERP? I remember hearing last year what a significant undertaking it was going to be, and if we could get periodic updates on, on the work, that would be, that would be helpful.
Absolutely. Thank you Chair Bronson.
And that's going to be quite a task.
Thank you.
Yeah, just hope it doesn't crash, right?
Yes, ma'am.
It's going to be, it's going to be user-friendly, huh? Promise?
Promise.
Promise.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Finance and Risk Management, who's presenting?
Good afternoon, Chair Bronson, members of the board. My name is Ellen Moulton, and I will be the Director of Finance and Risk Management in July. I want to thank you for giving me the opportunity to address you and to tell you about the Finance and Risk Management Department. So who is Finance and Risk Management, and what do we do? Our mission is to provide accurate, timely financial and risk information to the county departments and the community at large through excellent customer service. To do this, the Finance and Risk Management Department consists of more than 165 positions grouped into 10 distinct divisions. It includes 21 street lighting improvement districts, one road improvement district, and one domestic water improvement district. Finance's operational budget is approximately $27.9 million in expenses and 10.1 in revenue. Finance operates primarily within the general fund. This is where nine out of the 10 of divisions live. These divisions are administration, budget, department analysis, financial control and reporting, financial management, financial operations, financial transactions, internal audit and procedures and training, and revenue management. The Risk Management Division, the 10th Division, operates within the Internal Service Fund, and its budget is about 40% or $10.5 million of Finance's overall budget, and almost the entire revenue budget of $9.8 million. The Finance Improvement Districts live within the Special Revenue Funds. So what does Finance do well? As I said, Finance consists of 10 divisions. Each division has its own success stories. Finance ensures that all staff and vendors are paid accurately and on time, that all departments receive assistance that they need to process accounting transactions and analyze data, that user access is accurate, and that the interfaces between the various systems are working properly. Procedures are written, and training for the financial systems is provided. Internal audits are issued to provide assistance to departments and to management as a whole. Tax bills are assembled and mailed as required. Revenue for the county are billed and collected in a timely manner. Cash is monitored routinely and forecasted into the future to determine if any corrections are necessary. Capital projects are monitored and reported accurately and timely. Debt is issued as needed and managed to ensure compliance with market ratings and that our market ratings are maintained. Risk Management Self-Inured Trust Fund is managed. Countywide insurance is procured, and the environmental and tort litigation claims are processed timely and accurately. So what are the things that Finance has accomplished? The Budget Division has received the Government Finance Officers Association Distinguished Budget Award for the past 24 years. That's an incredible accomplishment. The Financial Control and Reporting Division continues to receive the GFOA Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting. With the receipt of the Fiscal Year 2020 ACFER, that's the Annual Comprehensive Financial Report, still learning all my acronyms again, the county has now received this award 35 times in 37 years, which is more than any other county in Arizona. Finance has received this award each year since 1984 with the exception, with two exceptions, 1990 and 1999. For 2020, we were one of only five counties in Arizona to receive this award. In order to receive this award, the ACFER must meet a 45-page extensive checklist with criteria ranging from formatting to specific accounting practices. One of Finance's greatest successes this past year was with the ACFER. The Financial Control and Reporting Division normally consists of 16 staff members. Despite being down by more than five, more than a third of the division, they were still able to produce the Annual Comprehensive Financial Report, get it completed, and issued without any findings. We hope to receive our Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting in the next few months. So what are our goals for the coming year? Well, first, is to continue to improve our efficiency and effectiveness through automating the county's financial processes and to find new ways to assist the county as a whole with interpreting and using financial data. Second, to work with HR to determine the appropriate salaries for our accountants and analysts so that we can become more competitive in the market and become an employer of choice. And third, to assist with the successful implementation of the new Enterprise Resource Planning System, Pima Connects. The county issued an RFP to replace the various financial, budgeting, human resources, procurement, and work management systems earlier this year. It has been an intense process that is drawing to a close with a recommendation of a selected vendor going to county administration within the next 60 days. After that selection, the implementation will take approximately two years. This system will impact all divisions within Finance and Risk Management and will help to automate and transform many of the business processes used throughout the county. So what are the challenges Finance is experiencing? We continue to have difficulty filling vacant positions. This is our biggest challenge. We have about 30 positions vacant for most of this year. As soon as we hire one person, another person retires or moves on to another position with higher pay. To ensure that we have enough staff for normal operations and the implementation of the ERP later this year, we are going to need to become more competitive. So why are Finances services important to Pima County and the community? As with all central service departments, Finance collaborates with all of the departments and provides them with the support and financial data that they need to make educated decisions and manage their business. A few examples: creating the requested, recommended, tentative, and adopted budget, both for operations and for capital; creating interim financial statements for various departments; creating monthly or quarterly cash flows and analysis; creating monthly expenditure and revenue forecasts and analysis. Finances also ensures that the county is in compliance, in compliance with the Government Accounting Standard Board, in compliance with generally accepted accounting principles, in compliance with GFOA recommendations and requirements, in compliance with our debt instruments, and in compliance with many other items. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you today. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
No, but I know all the acronyms.
Well, good for you. I had to look a couple of them up again.
Madam Chair.
Well, having come from that profession, yes.
Could you tell, going back to the issues and concerns that you raised, Ms. Moulton, with regard to recruitment and retention, I know you're not going to be the director until July, but I was really intrigued under major departmental issues when I read about the internship program that the department is starting to try and induce college students to become Pima County employees. Could you tell us a little bit more about that program?
Sure. The Finance Department started an internship program a number of years ago where we were going to the University of Arizona, and they have since expanded it to go to the other state universities. The goal of the project is to, or the program is to entice local students to come work for the county. The county's accounting department, Finance and Risk Management Department, is one of the most diverse accounting firms that anybody could ever hope to work for. We have such a range of options. Normally, when you're in, in an accounting field, you kind of specialize, but we have such a breadth of businesses in the counting that we have the opportunity to, to have a variety of skills that would need to be learned from cash management, revenue management, data analysis. And so we're using the internship program, hopefully, as a feeder to identify people that are going to school here, have them come work for us, part-time, paid, and then, you know, when they graduate and get their degree, hopefully, they want to come back and work for us again.
So we, have we had any interns who've become Pima County employees?
I believe that we've had a couple. So yes.
And is it, and maybe it's too early to ask this, but are there any potential lessons for other departments that are having similar, similar issues?
I think engaging with the local education community and identifying ways where students can see how they can apply their degrees is always very beneficial.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Chair Bronson, I'm wondering if the new tuition reimbursement, if we could use that in some way to help encourage people to intern while maybe paying for a portion of their classes? Or they receive credit, work for us, and maybe that would be a nice way to transition them.
I think that the tuition reimbursement program is going to be very well-received by all staff. I know that in my current department, ADG, we have a number of people that want to take advantage of that, and I'm sure the same is true for Finance.
Yeah. Okay, great. Thanks.
Thank you. All right, let's move on to GMI, Grant Management and Innovation.
Hi, good afternoon, Chair Bronson and members of the board. I am Regina Kelly, Director of the Pima County Department of Grants Management and Innovation, also known as GMI. GMI supports county departments across the grant's lifecycle. We identify grant opportunities, develop and prepare grant applications, mostly federal ones, which are often very complex. This year alone, the Board of Supervisors has accepted approximately $295 million in grant awards, and GMI is a key partner in procuring this significant amount of grant funding. Additionally, GMI oversees grant award implementation because our department is responsible for federal grant compliance. In post-award phases, we help departments develop sub-award agreements with external nonprofit partners, as well as grant-funded vendor contracts. We are also responsible for the fiscal monitoring of all federal grant subrecipients. Additionally, we perform the day-to-day cash management of all grant awards in Pima County, which includes allowability analysis, forecasting, liaising with all the auditors, and ensuring all costs allocated against grants have the correct backup in order to prevent fraud. We also assist with performance evaluation and policy innovation with data analysis and validation. For example, the Research and Analysis Division of GMI is chiefly responsible for the coordination and management of project data for each Pima County project funded by the $203 million the county received via the American Rescue Plan Act Recovery Fund direct allocation. Over the last four years, GMI has grown exponentially. The metric GMI uses to measure growth is to compare the schedule of federal expenditures, federal awards, year over year. That's also known as the CIFA. This metric does not count all the state and private funding, but the lion's share of the grant monies procured and managed by GMI are federal, so the CIFA comparisons reliably indicate our growth. In our first year of operation, fiscal year 2018, 2019, the CIFA federal expenditure total was 35, 39 million, and I'm rounding up. The next fiscal year, the amount was 81 million. And last year, 2020, 21, the expenditure total was 138 million. So in just three fiscal years, the amount of federal expenditures GMI manages has increased by 253%. This dramatic growth in the federal revenue reflects how GMI has helped the county face the enormous challenges of the coronavirus crisis by ensuring community and department needs were met while also navigating complex and often shifting federal rules and guidance during the COVID pandemic. One more thing about that 138 million in federal awards we managed last year, after 11 months of intense scrutiny, as per usual, with the single audit, the Arizona Office of the Auditor General determined there were no audit findings and no observations for any of this 138 million.
Congrats.
Thank you. This is a huge accomplishment for GMI and our key partner in maintaining strong and effective financial controls, the Pima County Finance and Risk Management Department. Here's what happens if you are not found by your auditor to be a low-risk audity. Federal agencies can attach significantly burdensome additional terms and conditions to future grants, which translates to a much higher administrative burden, not only for internal federal grant implementing Pima County departments, but for our very important external nonprofit partners. Also, on the audit front this year, GMI provided strong assistance to the Recorder and the Elections Department during the special audit required by the Arizona State Legislature pursuant to a law passed at the end of the 2021 session. This law required the Auditor General to report on private grant award dollars. This law required the Auditor General to report on private grant award dollars received and expended for 2020 elections. Pima County used only one private grant for the 2020 election, a $950,000 COVID-19 Grants Program Award from the nonprofit Center for Tech and Civic Life, received on October 20th, 2020. Once again, at the end of that special audit, we batted 1,000. There were no findings and no observations on that special audit. There are so many accomplishments to call out to you on behalf of my team, including, for example, the Pima Recovers website that Interim Director Zufalt just touched upon. I don't have the time to detail all of them here, but the last accomplishment I want to call out to highlight is that GMI has brought in 14.85 million in advanced payments from the federal government to cover 100% of costs incurred and forecast to be incurred to provide humanitarian support to asylum seekers. Thank you so much, and I look forward to your questions.
Thank you. Questions?
Madam Chair.
Supervisor.
Does your department provide information on potential grant opportunities to, to other county departments?
Yes, sir, we do, yes.
Okay. How is that done?
It's done a few ways. Supervisor Scott, Madam Chair, and what we do is, we have one full-time person, and one of their major responsibilities is 100% focused on scouring the federal live wire, if you will, of all the opportunities as they come in, and then feeding those opportunities out to our program managers and coordinators in our Development Division. The Development Division meets with its client departments every month, and we include those opportunities. That's the first way. The second way is that subject matter experts within the departments, through their professional affiliations, through webinars, through conferences that used to be in-person but are now largely digital, in many of those contexts, will find out about upcoming federal opportunities. And so we learn together with our SMEs in the departments and also with our own opportunity research.
And then, other than avoiding cumbersome federal audits that lead to even more cumbersome federal restrictions, any other lessons from this extraordinary time during the pandemic that will help the department moving forward?
I think, I think everyone this afternoon thus far, and I know this morning, touched a lot on recruitment and retention. We have asked a lot of our, of the employees who have left over the last two years, some in part due to the exhaustion and the burden of what happened during the COVID pandemic, some had planned their retirement anyway, but we put a lot of stock in the exit interviews with our employees to try to learn how we can do better. And one of the things we hear over and over again is training. Please train more. And I think the really extraordinary thing that we saw happen, both under the Trump administration and the Biden administration, is that the COVID opportunities and guidance shift a lot. That's because the pandemic needs, of course, shift a lot, both for nonprofits and for businesses. So it makes sense, but the training has to happen so that our, our people, our staff, can stay on top of it. And when they don't feel fully trained, it just adds to their stress and, and potential burnout.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any further questions? Okay, let's move on to procurement.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Chair Bronson, members of the board, County Administrator Lesher. I'm Procurement Director Terry Spencer, and I'm pleased to be here this afternoon to provide you with an overview of the Procurement Department. Our fiscal year 22-23 budget remains consistent with prior years, with 94% salary and 6% expense and 31 FTEs. Our vision is to be recognized as an organization dedicated to conserving public funds while conducting procurement processes in a fair, open, and competitive manner. Our mission is to maximize the benefits that Pima County citizens receive from the expenditure of public funds on goods and services in a professional, ethical, and lawful manner through a program dedicated to transparency, impartiality, accountability, and excellent customer service. We carry out our vision and our mission by following the NIGP Institute for Public Procurement values and guiding principles with a primary focus on service. The Procurement Department brings value to the county by ensuring prudent expenditure of public funds by the authority of Arizona Revised Statutes, Board of Supervisors policies, and the Procurement Code. We are a centralized procurement department with three divisions. Our Materials and Services Division is responsible for procuring goods and general services under the authority of the Procurement Code Title 11. One of our largest endeavors that we're undertaking this year, as Mr. Zufalt and Ms. Moulton refer to, is the ERP/RFP solicitation process. Our Design and Construction Division is responsible for procuring construction, architectural, and engineering services under the authority of Arizona Revised Statutes Title 34 and Board of Supervisors Policy D291. Last year, one of our largest undertakings in that area was our pavement preservation roadway program for $85 million, and this year, we're getting ready to start that secondary cycle for about $65 million within the next month. And then our Administrative Services Division is responsible for the administrative functions of our department: HR, personnel, recruitment, and budgeting. And then our Contracts Processing Program, which is, it also includes the county's contract repository. We also have our Purchasing Card Program, and our Vendor Relations Program, and our Training Program. So providing guidance and direction to ensure compliance with policies and procedures is an important function of all three of these divisions. So we're responsible for the procurement process, from receipt of a requisition from a requesting department through solicitation of offers to contract award. And then, once a contract is awarded and executed, the requesting or the administering department is responsible then for managing that, that contract. So then also placing and monitoring any orders for ensuring that the vendor is paid, as well as any then contract modifications. So what do we do well? We strive to provide excellent customer service. We recently conducted two customer satisfaction surveys, both externally and internally, and our external vendor survey returned very positive results for our ability to conduct procurement processes in a fair and open manner. Our internal customer survey rated our performance on a scale of 1 to 5, 4.5 to 5, for responsiveness and ability to provide solutions, our procedures and our online resources, as well as our training program. We strive to be proactive versus reactive, and we meet with our client departments monthly or quarterly to discuss procurement issues so that we can enhance our service as well as our client relations. We find that it's important to do this because it allows our client departments to then perform their jobs better, to secure their services in a greater efficiency, with greater efficiencies, and then it allows us to answer their questions before they become issues or problems down the road. And we are an award-winning department. I am most proud of the fact that for the past 17 years, we have received national procurement awards. Our annual award from the National Procurement Institute, or NPI, is for the achievement of excellence in procurement. And I've got some statistics here. So we are one of 10 agencies in Arizona and one of 43 counties in the United States and Canada to receive the award in 2021. Our triennial award through NIGP is the Quality Public Procurement Department Award, or QPPD, and that says that our department is one of 159 governments to have attained this distinction, and one of five agencies in Arizona to hold an active accreditation in 2020. So these award applications allow us to continually review our procurement processes and, and find improvements. And I'm extremely proud of our staff for their contributions in achieving these awards since 2005, and I'd like to also sincerely thank the board for your support and your recognition when we received these awards. It means a lot to us. So looking ahead to our fiscal year 22-23 department goals, we'd like to continue our focus on training. We find it necessary to expand our program with our newly hired procurement training coordinator, not only in a virtual setting, which we have been doing the past two years, but hoping to bring people now, we're starting to bring people back in for in-person trainings, as well as some online trainings that we can provide. Training is just critical. As, as many have mentioned, Ms. Kelly mentioned, it's, it's really important to continually provide training. We have so many processes and procedures that people have to follow that it can become confusing. We'd also like to implement the process improvements that we learned from our internal and external customer surveys, and based on those comments that people said, we're always looking for ways to improve and improve our service. We'd also like to resume vendor outreach as our ability to return to in-person events on a larger scale becomes more available to us, such as the Southern Arizona Procurement Fair or our vendor, reverse vendor trade shows. The inflationary market has posed many challenges due to the supply chain shortages resulting in contractual price issue, increases, and our goal is to continue to evaluate these requests based on market conditions and our available price indices, to ensure that there's fair pricing to the vendors and to the county. In closing, as other departments have mentioned, we've struggled with staff recruitment and retention. We're almost fully staffed right now. We have 31 FTEs. We are, we only have two vacant positions at the moment, so I'm pleased about that. But salary levels continue to be a concern, as well as recruiting qualified staff. But I'm hopeful that some of the options and benefits that we're starting to see, such as the tuition reimbursement program and our newly implemented county alternative work schedule option for staff, will help promote some work-life balance for our, for our employees, and will help make the Procurement Department an attractive place to be employed. So that's all I have for you. Can I answer any questions?
Thank you. Any questions?
Nope. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much.
And again, you guys are always getting awards. That's, that's good. That's a good thing. All right. Moving on to facilities management.
Good afternoon, Chair Bronson, members of the board, and Administrator Lesher. Lisa Josker here to present the information about the Facilities Management Department. Like to read you just a little something that we have on our, our website. We state, "Our goal is to provide a comfortable, clean, safe, and functioning work environment for governmental services in an energy-efficient and cost-effective manner." What does that mean? It means we do buildings. Simply put, we do buildings. But it's not so simple. We do 7.5 million square feet of buildings, only five, or excuse me, 9% of which are offices. The rest are elected official spaces, there are county community centers, there are libraries, there are animal care centers, jails, courts. So we have all different kinds of building types, which is the most fascinating part about our, our department, is we, we have exposure to every single building type you could probably have, even better than a lot of architectural firms. We have three main divisions that are in our department, according to the budget. We've got Administration, which is our, our leadership. It's also our front desk, which takes emergency calls. The front desk also takes calls when we have elevator entrainments, and I'd like to tell you a really quick story about that. One day, I went past the, the front desk, and I heard the admin singing. What is she singing for? Well, there was an elevator entrapment. The person had been in there for 20 minutes, and she was helping the person to calm down a little bit by having her sing a song together. I mean, we'll do anything to keep things calm. It was great. So our administration area, we also do leases. We do building leases. We do license agreements, rights of entry for when utilities want to come into our buildings. Those are all documents they work on, and we have parking operations as part of our administration. Another part, a secondary part of our, our department is the Design and Construction. Design and Construction has renovations in interiors. We have construction management services, which is what they say, construction management, and we have new buildings, which are new buildings. The renovations and interiors portion, they do everything from, somebody needs a chair, we purchase a chair, we fit the person to the chair, we will do everything from, in our division, we'll do everything from, I have an idea, let's build a new building. I have an idea, let's renovate a space. I have an idea, let's get, let's change some people around because someone's department is, organization is changing, and we help them to reorganize their department by doing, changing their interiors and bringing in furniture, appropriate furniture. Happy to, we do everything. We also have, our interiors has, they have specifications that they put together for standards for the counties. So there's furniture standards, there's color standards, there's material standards, so that we can more easily accommodate people quickly and keep choices to, we have enough choices, but keep choices so that we have enough paint in-house, we can get the colors, we can get the fabrics, we can get the furniture, and there's, we can, when we do make adjustments, we can shift things around very easily. Our last, last portion of our department is the Maintenance and Operations, and that's a significant part of our department. There are about a third of the, or two-thirds of the PCNs are in our operations and, and maintenance division, part, part. I'd like to give you a little, a few statistics on those because those are the, those are the folks that you see out there doing things. You don't really know necessarily what they're doing, they're, you know, we're constantly around, but what do we do? We have two divisions in the Maintenance and Operations. One is the maintenance people. Those are the people in the blue shirts, and they go around, they'll change filters, they do, change light bulbs, they'll hang pictures for you, they'll, they'll do anything that they're, they're asked to do. The other part is our specialty trades. There are electricians, electronics, plumbers, and HVAC folks. I want to give you a few statistics on just those two, those two divisions, or those two trades. So our maintenance folks, over, well, overall department, we have 206 PCNs. Right now, we have a 21% vacancy rate. In our trades, maintenance shops, just the maintenance folks, we have a 27% vacancy rate for those, just those, those, that job description alone. And in our specialty trades, 31% vacancy rate, which is why we are, one of our challenges lately is getting people to apply, you know, qualified people to apply and, and getting things done. Just this past year, we had, in fiscal year 2021, we received 20,000 work orders from various departments around the county. This year, we're estimated to receive 25,500. Excuse me one moment. It seems as if the number of work orders that are coming into our department are increasing by 5,000 to 7,000, 1,000 per year. So it's quite, quite a bit. So when we have this type of vacancy in this part of our, specific part of our department, it's, it's crucial to us. Our goals are to continue to work on creating efficiencies within our organization, which means filling vacancies. We have spent a lot of time recently blasting apart the silos that we had in our, in our department so that we have a more integrated department. Our folks speak to each other and talk to each other. We develop projects with each other. We make assignments with each other. There's, even though there's different divisions, they are not, they, they are not siloed in terms of their work, although they have specialties, but they're not siloed. We want to continue energy savings and sustainable We want to continue energy savings and sustainability efforts in all aspects of operations and improvements and the development of projects that we do. There's some of our challenges are aging buildings and infrastructure, which you all were in this building right now. We're planning on doing something we've never done before, and that is emptying an entire high-rise. And to do that, we had to find space for these people to go to and we've, and moving them out in a very short period of time. And we're, we will accomplish that goal. Another challenge, cost of construction materials, you're hearing the same thing over and over again, delays of receipt of materials, delays in construction. We've had projects where concrete was supposed to show up on one day, and they delayed and delayed and delayed, and finally, you know, four or five days later, they said, "We're going to be there in 20 minutes." And it's like, oh, my gosh. So, we have to, have to constantly be in touch and with what's going on with our projects and with people involved in them. Another challenges are the staff retention. We are, one of the things that I love that's going on right now is the education incentives, the, some of the pay rates that, there's talk about pay increases, that's wonderful. And then also the fact that there's going to be a class and comp study, which I'm looking forward to seeing some of the results on that, hoping that that goes through. However, I am not waiting for a class and comp study to come through. We've got other things that we want to do in order to recruit people, especially in our trades, and that is to create a tighter ties with the trade schools, with Pima Community College and things of that nature, to try and encourage people to apply for our, for the trades in our department. We are also looking to, we've started off this past year doing trainee programs, internal trainee programs, and we've, we've brought people in, and there is a policy, there's already a policy for training, you know, bringing people in as trainees. So, we've done that a couple of times. We've been mostly successful, and we're happy to, to be doing that. So, why, why is facilities management important to Pima County? We don't get awards. We don't win awards. We don't, we're not looking for awards. What we look to do is to do what we say we're going to do when we say we're going to do it. And our services, I believe, are important because the 7.5 million square feet of building is a Pima County, they are Pima County assets. They belong to the, to the people in Pima County, and they need to be, to be, to be treated as such. And so, we are very passionate about our buildings and about maintenance and about bringing, keeping, making things energy efficient whenever we, whenever we can in order to look at the costs of, the costs of the buildings. So, we're, that's what we feel is, is why we're important. We're protecting assets for Pima County. Let's see if there's, wanted to just let you know a few other things. We have, we are always looking to provide energy efficiency in our buildings. So, when we're replacing equipment, we will look for the most efficient equipment when we're replacing that. When we're designing, we're looking for ways to design. We're not looking to just be a silver lead building. We're looking to, how can we, how can we accomplish a balance between what's being paid for the building and what we get back? And we feel that we're, we're constantly having those conversations and working with our consultants and builders to do that. And in conclusion or closing, I just want to say that our motto is, "We pivot on a dime," and we pride ourselves on doing that because there are a lot of things that come at us. We can plan our days out all the time, and I can guarantee you that there is not one person that who works in this department, whose day gets planned out that doesn't get interfered with because something else has come up. And so, we are proud of the fact that we will, we will respond to any emergencies that come up, as they come up. And that is what I have for you today. Any questions?
Any questions?
Chair Bronson, I've just had the opportunity to work with your office with you a few times since we joined here and then in my previous life with a nonprofit. So, I have to say that the service that you provide, not just our internal partners, but all of the other nonprofits and organizations that are in county buildings, is really appreciated. Y'all are great.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Thank you, Supervisor. If there are no more questions, let's move to IT, information technology.
Chair Bronson, Board members and County Administrator Lasher. My name is Dan Hunt. I'm the CIO for Pima County. Excited to fill this role. Appreciate the opportunity to do so. Information Technology Department, we provide IT services, equipment, and support to all departments that answer directly to the county administrator, as well as we provide support and services to elected officials. Most elected officials have their own IT departments and own IT teams, but the piece that we provide to them is the connectivity between them and all other departments within the county, as well as internal and external connectivity as they do business throughout the county, throughout the country. When I was appointed as the CIO back a little over four years ago, we rearranged the way that we were managing the department. We tried to move from what was called a waterfall methodology of planning, where we planned and planned and planned, and by the time we started to implement, it was already too late and we had to plan over again. So, we've moved to, the buzzword in today's world is an agile methodology, and you know, Pima County doesn't do anything as anybody else, so we've kind of made our own agile methodology that we function with. But we have teams that we refer to as business systems management teams. Supervisor Bronson, you will remember, we used to call them relationship managers, and that wasn't quite the, the term that fit a lot of people's desires. It was a true term that was coined through the ITIL model of IT and was brought into our world when, when Lionel Bitner was the CIO. So, it was a, it was a federally known and accepted term, but it didn't really mesh with the way we were doing things around here. So, we've changed our teams. We have teams that, we divided our teams up underneath each of the, at that point in time, deputy county administrators, so that our team was divided equally across those departments, those deputy county administrators and the departments that they serve, so that we could start moving into this agile methodology where we understood the, the projects that each of those departments had, and then we were able to commit each two weeks on work that we would complete, and then each quarter on work that we would complete. So, we currently, we're still functioning under that. We, we plan each quarter. We work with each of the department directors to make sure that we have captured all of the work that they need us to do on their behalf from an IT standpoint. We put that in a ranked order in what we believe are the, the order that we will work on that, those projects. We pass it in front of the deputy county administrators and Ms. Lasher to make sure that that meets the county's desire and need, and then that's how we function. One of the things that Ms. Josker spoke about is, you know, everyone has a great plan until somebody punches you in the head and then you have to revamp, right? That was a comment by the great philosopher himself, Mike Tyson, you know? And so, we have plans, but things happen. I mean, we have outages that we don't, you know, hope for or plan for, but we have to deal with those. We also have, at times, that the Board of Supervisors has something that they need done, or county administration has something.
And speaking of that, I need something done.
Okay. Awesome.
No, it's, my computer's not working, and I keep getting the video signal.
Okay. Like, right now, as you said, on the, up there, or?
No.
In your office? Okay.
In my office, yeah.
Madam Chair, while we're talking about these things, I have a couple of things up in my office.
No, no problem. We will make sure that Mr. Gola is on that very, very quickly. Thank you. Again, so, you know, we created what we call value streams, and our intent is to truly provide value to each of the departments and understanding what their needs are. You know, it was interesting when I came back as the Chief Information Officer, that many people wanted to say, "We have picked this thing, go implement our thing," and we have finally been able to move to a, "Here are our needs, help us pick the best solution." So, as each of the different departments from the centralized service departments have been up here today, I would, I would like to say that we work with each and every one of those. I mean, we, we work with procurement because we work with each department and procurement on each of the purchases that they make from an IT perspective. We work with finance because the vast majority of our teams and the equipment that we purchase are not, are not directly out of the general fund. They're in what are called internal service funds. And so, we, we create and, and put in, you know, seven- and 10-year plans, saying, "Here's what we plan on spending, here's what our department costs are," and then those costs are allocated out to each of the department to help fund the work that we do. The vast majority of the funding that is in our budget, which is right just shy of $53 million this year, is truly for application support of department tools and services, and a very small portion is actually for the IT team. This year, we have placed a greater emphasis on end-user customer experience. Ms. Lasher was very kind to point out to me that we're being very successful in our project implementation, but the vast majority of our customers that are out in the field couldn't care less if we completed a project. They want, you know, their computer to work, their phone to work, their Outlook to work. And so, we, we took, we didn't ask for any additional staff. We took staff that we had, that we had vacancies, and we created different teams whose sole focus is on the end-user and customer experience. Recently, we implemented a new ticketing system. We had lived with the one we had for quite some time. Customers were not extremely happy with it. It wasn't user-friendly. Reports to date, the vast majority of folks find this one very intuitive and easy to use. In that tool, we have a customer service survey that we send out randomly to whoever gets picked by the system, and our customer service surveys are coming back at 90-plus percent that people are happy with the service that we provided on people that have been submitting tickets through that system. Again, we, we created additional teams, and hopefully, that additional support will provide a better end-user experience. One of the things that we've also done is worked on additional automation of tasks that we do over and over again, so that the end-user, when they submit something, we have automated tasks that take care of that as opposed to having to wait on a person to do those tasks. So, hopefully, we'll see additional, additional end-user experience getting better on that. If I were to say the thing that I think is the most important thing that we do and has been for a while, in this, in the news you see every single day, there are cybersecurity events that happen, and so, cyber is probably one of the biggest places that we're focusing our time, effort, and money at this point in time. With the ARPA funding that's coming in, we, the vast majority of that is on cyber. We've hired, or most recently hired, an information security officer, officer that comes with one of the highest level of certifications in that field, and he has been, hit the ground running, helping central IT as well as elected officials. So, as I said before, elected officials normally have their own IT team, and they've handled most of their security things on their own. As of late, you know, the tools that they have and the support that they have with their, their staff, they've reached out to us to ask us to help them with those things. We've been working with the National Guard here in Arizona, as well as Department of Homeland Security, to bring in teams to do work for them, to be able to help understand what things are necessary in their organizations. I, I applied on behalf of the, on behalf of the county through Grants Management for a federal DOHS cybersecurity grant. That grant is administered actually by the state of Arizona, and it provides very specific security tools that are available to municipalities. Where this year, starting in July, will also be available to school districts, DUs. Recently, in the funding that was requested at the state of Arizona from their IT department, their IT is part of Arizona Department of Homeland Security, they put a large amount of money in their budget because they are hoping and expecting to be able to pay for those cyber tools for every entity, which would also include Pima County, City of Tucson. And so, we're working very closely with them on that funding and helping them roll those tools out. I, we, I participate in the National Association of Counties, and they have a CIO team that meets, I mean, that emails very frequently, and one of the most recent things that we're participating in is we're piloting a program called the Information Security Scorecard, and that provides direct insight from the outside, what people can see about Pima County, each of the elected officials across our network, to help us understand where we need to focus our efforts to make sure we're keeping data secure. Again, we're working with elected officials. Security infrastructure teams are also helping supplement in their staff if and when they have an event that they have a concern over, that they don't believe that they have staff that are capable of handling. Each year, IT is part of the financial audit. We are audited by the Arizona Auditor General's Office, and several years ago, we were 20, 30 findings each year. Last year, we had a couple of verbal findings, but a couple of things that they have asked us to do, we have to do this year, and we're moving right now on implementing it, is multi-factor authentication, to where you have to be able to, you know, it's, it's no different than getting into your banking app. They, they'll send you a text to say, "Prove this is you." So, we're implementing that currently. And we are also, one of the biggest breaches at the national level in the last two years was the Microsoft Exchange, so email servers on premise. The last time that we had to reapply for our cybersecurity insurance, which quadrupled in cost, even though we didn't have a single finding, the exchange piece was, they said, "If you have Exchange email on premise, moving forward, we won't, we will not, we will not insure you." So, multi-factor authentication and email on premise. So, we're, those are two of our big projects that we're moving forward right now. In our cost increases this year, there, there were a couple, most of them to do with cybersecurity. In our data center, we run in a virtualized environment. In that virtualized environment, our annual agreement, it went up a couple million dollars because, over a three-year period because of security tools that were implemented. The other part of our increase was Microsoft agreements, things that we put in during the pandemic, like Teams and different things of that nature, those costs we had to re-up on. Last year in July, we began working with Sheriff Nanos, and he asked us to come in and do a review of their team and of the work that they were doing, and help make some recommendations on how they could be more efficient at what they were doing. We had a six-month project. We were going to work on that. After one month, Sheriff Nanos asked Mr. Huckleberry if they would just have central IT manage their IT. So, in July, we began, we took over the management of their IT environment, which was a very large undertaking. We were handed nine positions, nine people in positions with 17 openings. So, we've been able to fill those positions and supporting them in a lot of work that they're doing. I mean, they've got accent bodyboard cameras going on right now. They have, you know, saving all their data up into the cloud, refitting all of their, their patrol cars with different modems. So, it's been a pretty large uplift, but it's been very, a good learning experience, and I believe from them, they, they like the services we're providing. I want to thank the board for, four years ago, putting a policy in place with Mr. Huckleberry here to where we began a lifecycle management plan. To that point, having been here several years before that, we had departments that had two-year-old computers, up to departments that had 20-plus-year-old computers that were hand-me-downs. And so, now, we have computers that are replaced on a four-year cycle. So, another part of, of our increased budget this year is, we don't replace computer monitors. Every time we replace a computer, we replace them every other time. So, for the next four years, we'll have an uplifting cost to be replacing computer monitors. Michelle Simon from the library and I submitted a report to you guys recently about our broadband task force that we have going. I would like to say that that's moving along very well. That's a, I would call that as an other duties is assigned, not just specifically an IT duty. But in partnership with the City of Tucson, all of the, the internet service providers in the local area, as well as many, many businesses in the area, as well as religious organizations, we have four good task force teams that are gathering a lot of data, and we, at some point, will be bringing you forward some items for consideration and recommendation on how you best want us to move forward. In that document, we listed our short, medium, and long-term goals. Each of the teams have met their short-term goals, and we've got a, a lot of nice things going on out there. I don't know if you recently saw President Biden put out, I don't know if it's an executive order, an act, where he's talking about the 20 national companies that have agreed to help fund low-cost connectivity into homes. So, that will be a very important thing moving forward. One of the things that, like I've heard all day long, is the recruitment and retention. It is a big issue. Supervisor Scott, I saw that you had asked multiple times about the multiple openings that show up, and we too are one of those departments that, that post one when we have five or 10 different. In our world, it has become much easier to manage one opening and hire from than it has been otherwise, but I can see where that's very difficult for you guys to see what's going on, and we didn't do it intentionally to make that problem. We, we do recruit all of our positions. The only time that we don't have a position out for recruitment is when it's going through HR and finance to be reclassified, when we need it to be a different type of position than it was previously. it to be a different type of position than it was previously. Another thing that we faced during COVID, and still to this day, is, you know, we used to be able to turn around equipment orders in a four-week period of time, maybe six weeks, and it bumped out to two months, three months, four months. And so, departments have been very good at understanding when we say, we'll put the order in, but we can't promise when it'll be here. Our vendors are doing very well in delivering ahead of time. Dell has been a very good partner, and they've been able to deliver ahead of time. But I don't know if everything people have ordered will be here by the end of June. Another piece that you had asked Supervisor Scott was, what do you do to try to help fill some of these voids in trying to be able to recruit folks? As Mr. Zufeld mentioned, I mean, a lot of the people we have applying are east of the Mississippi. The vast majority of people on our staff are highly technical people that they can, you know, they can ask for a lot higher dollar figure. And we've been very fortunate to be able to keep the vast majority of people on our staff, and we haven't lost a whole lot of people. But we seem to interview and hire every day and still have 30 openings, no matter how many times we interview and hire. But we've gotten very good at interviewing and hiring. And we are very appreciative that Human Resources is doing job fairs. We've been participating in that, and we've had some pretty good luck. We find that if you have to spend eight hours there and you get one person, it was well worth the effort. Some other things that we do, we have been involved in the Adult Work Experience Program here in Pima County. We employ 10 to 12 people at all times, helping with our computer deployments, helping do support work. And out of those 10 to 12 people, we've been fortunate enough to be able to hire one or two of them each time to work in our department. And then we've also, over the last three years, or three sessions we've had these folks in a six-month period of time, all of those people have become employable in the county and in IT field. So, we feel that that's been very beneficial. We too, as others have mentioned, we use the trainee program, where we're able to hire people in at a lower rate that have a desire to work in a field, and then in a two-year period, have a plan to get them to the level that they're able to hit entry level in that position. We helped implement here at the county a program. When military employees are planning on leaving in their last six months, we're able to work with them, hire them into IT. They work for us. They still receive their federal pay. They still receive their federal benefits. But they work for us. And we've been able to hire one or two of those folks. Most of them, they think that this is what they want to do, but that doesn't end up being what they want to do. But we're getting six months of work and providing work experience for folks out of there. And then, one of the last things we've done is, we work with University of Arizona Elder College of Business on projects, and we've been able to get people that have graduated coming out of those programs that have a scholarship that requires them to work in government for two years. And so, we're able to at least land them for a couple of years and get their youthfulness and experience out of that. That's what I've got for you today.
Any questions?
Any questions?
Madam Chair.
Supervisor.
Mr. Hunt, thank you very much for your presentation, all the information, all your hard work. It's really interesting to look at the recommended budget for your department because you're actually going to be reducing
Correct.
your staffing, and yet, the budget is set to go up $6.5 million, and almost half of that is software maintenance and support.
Correct.
Now, I know you've discussed that to one extent or another during your presentation, but if you could flesh out in greater detail why there's been such a tremendous increase? I mean, that's going from $7.2 or $7.3 million for software maintenance and support last year to $10.5. What do you see as the chief reasons for that being such an increasing cost for the county?
Sure. So, all of our data center runs in a virtualized environment. We use a tool that's called VMware, and that's what manages that virtualized environment. I'll put it to you this way. We have 1,500 servers in our data center environment. And years ago, that 1,500 meant you had 1,500 devices in there. Now, it can be pared back to 50 devices that then run that, you know, 30 to 50 servers on top of a single device. And it's all done with virtualization software. So, each three years, we have to renew what our enterprise license agreement is with VMware and with Microsoft. And so, the way that they do that is, it depends on things that we've deployed. So, our data center got larger. We just recently, two years ago, we did a full data center replacement. We put brand-new equipment in both of our data centers, and we were already functioning under an enterprise license agreement. In the true-up, there were additional things that were found that, hey, we need to put these additional licenses in because we have more devices that we're managing right now. When we replaced our data centers, we went from two separate data centers, one running part of the network and running the other part, to building an infrastructure that would say, if one data center failed, we could move all of the workloads over to the other data center and still be able to keep everything running at one time. So, that's what we had done. And so, that increased our licenses on the VMware virtualization side, as well as the Microsoft side. So, some of the things that were in the Microsoft side was, there was CARES funding that was used to purchase some of the Microsoft pieces. And then, when county administration came back and they said, this funding is going to be spent on these things, we need your budget to cover that. So, some of that was us covering things that we had purchased to be able to support the environment through CARES. But it's, we used to budget annually for those increases. And working with finance, we agreed, we won't budget annually because then it'll show overinflated. We would have a million we didn't spend, and then you'd have been saying, why did you spend that million? So, we do a five, seven, and 10-year budget where we, our budget used to go up and down, up and down. I mean, we would have people that would call and say, I want to turn off these 25 phones because I want to buy a printer this month, and then I want to turn the phones back on next month for that cost. And so, we've now worked with finance to get very close to what we call the easy button. We've come up with numbers where we say, if you have X number of devices, then this is what your cost is for computers. Here's what is for servers. Here's what's for networking and telecom.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that detail.
All right.
Yeah, Chair Bronson, I just wanted to congratulate you on being a finalist in 2020 and 2021. No, 2022, just recently, for the Arizona CIO of the Year in the
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
It was a great honor for our team. And one of the things that we did, that I have asked other people that made the finalists, was I asked them what kind of process they used to get to that. I mean, it is truly an essay competition in my world. You were asked four or five questions, and you had to tell about your leadership and what you were doing in your organization to be able to support your team and the environment that you managed. And so, I involved our entire leadership team on, you know, help me put this together. And so, they get a lot of the credit for that.
Yeah.
So, thank you.
Congratulations to the whole team I know.
Thank you.
All right. If there are no further questions, then we'll move to OEM and Homeland Security.
Good afternoon, Honorable Chair, members of the Board, Administrator Lesher. My name is Shane Clark, and I serve as Director of your Pima County Office of Emergency Management, a position I have held since January of 2021. I recall and reflect on the first two hours of the job. Mr. Huckleberry calls me upstairs and says, I remember you as a fire chief. I remember you as a chief master sergeant in the Arizona Guard. We have this thing called COVID. That's a raging fire right now, and we need your help putting it out. That started a journey that has been a great year and a half. I'm truly honored to serve, I think, the most fantastic team and one of the best that I've ever worked with. Today, I like to, I have the honor to summarize how the budget afforded to my department allows us to focus on the "we." I say the "we." The "we" meaning us as the county and the partnerships that I've been able to develop. Many of them are in this room right now, and how much I have appreciated them in the last 18 months or so, as we've navigated many crises and pending issues. The "we," most importantly, is, you know, how we work within this team to provide Administrator Lesher and you the things that you need in order to be successful. But most importantly, it's the "we" as the community. The "we" that we are honored to serve, what we reflect in emergency management is the whole community, to bring control to chaos when situations occur, and to be able to help our community not only navigate that with many of the responders that you all know, but leading towards a purpose of recovery, to bring our community back to normalcy. Your OEM team is responsible to help prepare our community for an emergency by building community resilience, to provide training and exercises for first responders and other key stakeholders, to coordinate with peers in emergency management, key partners, from our county departments, to our first responder agencies, the Red Cross, other NGOs, organizations active in emergency response, and others, to build the critical relationships that are needed before the emergency. Once the emergency occurs, our role is to keep the county administrator and the board informed and receive guidance, to inform the community with vital information, to notify our citizens through mass notification and other tools when they need to move out of harm's way, to provide a location to find respite and information, to react and assist our first responders that are the incident commanders out in the field, and assist them with the resources they so desperately need. And as needed, activate our emergency operations center. The OEM team essentially serves three roles: their responsibilities Monday through Friday, their 24/7 on-call role, and the roles when we activate the emergency operations center. While we cannot conceivably plan for every what-if, we have frameworks in place, the National Response Framework and others, that provide the platforms to plan, educate, exercise, and respond. OEM has been a department just over 10 years. I hope that during that time, our team and our systems have proven themselves. It starts with people, your OEM team, and building relationships before the emergency. Many functions that we perform also fall within our grant compliance. Plans are in place and updated with key stakeholder participation. To highlight a couple of these plans, last year, we completed and the board approved the County Emergency Operations Plan. We are in the final stages of updating the County Multi-Jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan. Working with cities, towns, tribal, and Arizona Department of Emergency Management, the plan, once approved by FEMA, will allow eligible agencies the ability to submit and receive federal mitigation funding. OEM hosts training and exercises through grant funding. Annually, courses are provided at no cost to hundreds of first responders and key partners. After two years of restrictions, OEM in March hosted our first EOC exercise on wildfire response. Multiple agencies, including our county assessor, provided updates to all those that attended. Through our community outreach initiatives, we stress building emergency preparedness and resiliency, and work with local organizations and groups. In time of need, we react to an emergency. Historically, our two major issues have been fires and floods, but we all realize crisis comes in all shapes and sizes. In March of 2020, OEM activated the EOC for four months to assist our health department in the county's response to COVID. We assisted the health department and local partners to build vaccine pods. We coordinated with FEMA on behalf of the health department to bring mobile vaccine units to our county to reach vulnerable populations. During that activation, we also responded to the Bighorn Fire, when we deployed members of our team to the incident management team. OEM sent over 30 mass notification messages to our citizens and harm's way in collaboration with the management team and Pima County Sheriff's Department. We were with our community during the Aspen Fire, working on damage assessments and other measures. We work with the Red Cross to open emergency shelters to take in citizens needing shelter, respite, and information. We have great relationships with Pima Animal Care Center, Natural Resources Parks and Recreation, Pima County Fairgrounds for sheltering small and large animals when needed. We are postured for the next flood emergency and work regularly with the Flood Control District. With them, we track data from our watersheds, and there are measures in place to notify citizens and harm's way of flooding. Over the last year, Arizona Department of Forest and Fire Management has made available post-fire flood dollars. OEM has been able to coordinate requests that has resulted in hundreds of thousands of dollars to the Flood Control District and local fire districts for items like sandbaggers, swiftwater, and rescue-related equipment, and flood sensors. We are using these foundations of planning as we look at challenges faced with the Southwest border. Our future goals are to, one, continue to define efficiencies in what we currently accomplish, and, two, what do we need to improve? We are working with Grants Management Innovation on how we can bring grant dollars to our community to mitigate fire-related issues. We need to update our community wildfire protection plan. We are working with Pima County ITT to build a OEM dashboard, a platform that will not only keep our EOC staff updated, but a tool to keep leadership informed with real-time data. We are working to see how departments can perform better during an emergency through continuity of operations planning. Members of the Board, Chair, I hope I have sufficiently painted the picture of the great work of your OEM team. They are a proud and dedicated staff of professionals. They are agile, flexible, critical thinkers, the ones that we need when an emergency is upon us. I always appreciate the discussion on compensation. I too have concerns competing with the emergency management sector. In my close to 40 years in public safety and military service, this is one of the best teams that I've ever had the pleasure of working with. They are extremely hard. They work extremely hard to help make the community a better place. Pending any questions, thank you for your time, and thank you for your support.
And you're going to have a fun season, fire season, I think.
Yes, ma'am. I got to update my boss today on another one that's starting to cook.
Oh, boy. Any questions? Thank you very much, and welcome aboard.
Thank you.
All right. WIN Wireless Integrated Network.
Chair Bronson, members of the Board, Administrator Lesher, my name is Bob Meredith. I'm the Executive Director of PC WIN, Pima County's Wireless Integrated Network. It's my privilege to represent this department today. We provide a very critical service to Pima County and its constituents. Our department operates and maintains Pima County's public safety radio system that provides services to 50 different member agencies comprised of police, fire, and medical first responders. With federal, state, and local agencies operating on the system, PC WIN enables these organizations the ability to communicate internally as they execute their daily operations, but also the ability to communicate cross-agency in the event of a public emergency that requires a wider response involving several groups. PC WIN staff responsibilities are twofold, and they perform them both very well. One half of the staff manages the microwave system, the backhaul system that the radio system runs on, and the tower sites scattered across the county on mountain peaks and around the city. These connect all areas of the county, including the town of Ajo, which is a very far stretch. The other half of PC WIN staff provides programming and maintenance support for the radios on the system itself. It's 8,800 radios scattered across the different agencies. PC WIN is a unique county department in that all revenue is raised from fees assessed to our member agencies for the services being provided. Each year, we look for opportunities to expand by adding other first responder agencies to the PC WIN system. This has a positive impact for everyone that's involved by adding agencies to the system. It helps keep fees low as the shared fiscal responsibility is spread out among other agencies. It also allows interoperability with, for communications to be spread further, and that helps agencies serve the community better. Since the system went live in March of 2014, the PC WIN system has provided reliable, uninterrupted radio services. This success is due to the dedication and hard work of the PC WIN staff, the oversight from the PC WIN Board of Directors, county administration, and the Pima County Board of Supervisors. Chair Bronson, members of the Board, I welcome any questions that you might have.
Any questions? Yeah, I remember in 2014, it was quite a bit, it was quite challenging getting this all started.
I think one of the biggest challenges is getting all these agencies to work with each other.
Exactly.
Yes.
Madam Chair.
Supervisor.
Thank you. Just, and this might be related to some of the same topics that Mr. Hunt touched on, but last year, you had an adopted budget for other machine and equipment, other machines and equipment of $173,610. and equipment of $173,610. Next year, it's over $1 million. What are the big additional expenses?
Absolutely, yeah. Very similar to Mr. Hunt and IT, we operate on a life cycle. Our equipment has a longer life cycle than the four to five years that computer systems might have. The radio system operates on a 10-year life cycle for certain parts of the system, eight to 10 for other parts of the system. In the upcoming year, the biggest expense that we anticipate is related to the battery backup systems at the actual tower sites. Those went live with the system in 2014, and they are an eight-to-10-year lifespan. And we started seeing over the last couple of years more and more individual battery bank failures, to the point to where it is time for us to invest in replacing them as a whole. As a budget, the fees that we collect anticipate these higher expenses, so we collect them in advance, so we have a fund balance that pays that with cash, as opposed to having to go in arrears or any special assessments for our agencies. I hope that answers your questions, Supervisor.
It does, thank you, appreciate it.
Any other questions? Then let's move, thank you very much, and let's move on to comps.
Forget where the switch is to make this go up. Chair Bronson, members of the board, Ms. Lester, thanks for having me here today. It shouldn't take too long, I think I got this down to about a tight 35 minutes.
And you wonder how long your job security is.
Yes, Jan's saying in the back right now, it's nice working with you, Mark.
Well, you got a smile out of her. You woke her up.
So, the overarching mission of the Communications Office is to inform the public about the program, services, and benefits of county government. To do that, we have an office that's broken into three divisions. There's the Communications and Marketing Office, which provides traditional communications, media relations, and the like. Graphic Services, which provides all the graphic services, support the departments. And that's not just for communications or promotional stuff, that's also for departments who need reports or stationery, things like that. We manage all those graphic services. And then we have the Print Shop, which does the printing, full-service printing for the county. That can be anything from, if you need stickers for an outreach event, all the way up to giant banners that you might need, plus the day-to-day ministerial functions of the county mailing out bills and the like. There are several submissions that we also have. One is internal communications. We provide all the internal communications for the county, or not all, but the most of them, mostly through eScoop, which is the internal newsletter, plus also the eBlasts that are more urgent communications that go out to the county employees. We also provide media relations support for all the departments, including media training. We help departments and their SMEs who are going to be talking to the media become more comfortable about that, and pitfalls and traps that they could avoid, and make sure that they comport themselves very well in talking to the media. And photography and videography services, professional photography, promotional photography, videography, and the like. And then also, we maintain the branding standards for the county. Somebody's calling in. The branding standards for the county, and branding's pretty important to us. We want the county logo, all these wonderful blue domes that you see, to be easily recognizable by everybody who sees it and knows that's the county, that is an organization of excellence, a employer of choice in the community. So branding's really important to us, and that's one of the functions that we perform. It's one of the things Ms. Lester asked us to talk about here is value, and it's one of the questions that I get a lot about the Communications Office, is the value that's provided to the taxpayer. That was pretty well demonstrated during the pandemic over the past two years. When the pandemic hit, the county needed to get a lot of information out to a lot of people very quickly, and it needed to be accurate and need to be reliable. The Communications Office was the tip of the spear for that. We produced an enormous amount of information that we shared with the public to help them be informed about how to defend themselves from the pandemic, or protect themselves, how to get help, get tested, get vaccinated, and so forth. As part of that effort, we produced dozens of social media posts per week. And through the pandemic, the county's social medias, and especially the health department, averaged nearly 2 million reach. And reach means an individual, a unique person, who were viewing it at various times during the month, the information that we were sharing. Not all of that was the health department, it was about 600,000 or 700,000 a month, and the rest of it was PAC and everything else. PAC is always really big, they never have a downtime on their social media. In order to support all that information, we produced hundreds of graphics, images, photos, videos. We did nearly 1,000 videos in two years in order to share information about the pandemic. We created over 100 webpages with the IT department, including English and Spanish, in order to get the amount of varied information out about the pandemic. The bottom line was that because of the efforts of the Communications Office, the county was the go-to source for reliable and accurate information about the pandemic. We reached tens of thousands of people who might not normally have had a lot of exposure to information about their county government. And as the pandemic is transitioning to post-pandemic, we seem to be holding on to a lot of that audience. And that's important to us because of the other part of what I wanted to talk to you about is just not the value of the office through the pandemic, but the value of the office overall. There are hundreds of programs and services within the county that have a direct benefit to the people of this county, but people need to know that they exist in order to take advantage of them, and that's where our role comes in. We let people know what is available to them and how they can avail themselves of those services. But also, they need to know the benefits they're getting for their tax dollars. We help inform people about that. And they need to be able to speak to their government and to give feedback, so that this body and the county administration can help make the decisions necessary for the deployment of resources and services within the community. Bottom line is, the Communications Office helps county departments be successful in their varied missions, and that overall helps the county be successful, and it helps keep taxpayers informed about the benefits they're getting of their county government. In the coming year, we're going to have a lot of challenges in trying to communicate information about the county, especially the post-pandemic information. Those are very similar challenges to I expressed to you last year, one of them is the diminished news media. In past years, decades ago, the news media was extremely important. The third-party amplification of messaging was essential. It's still essential, it's still a huge part of our communications tools and our efforts. However, there's just not as many reporters, there's just not as many media outlets that used to be out there, and so we have to find other ways to communicate that information. Thankfully, technology makes that easy and very cost-effective. One of the biggest tools that we use is social media. Social media has its pluses and minuses. It's a very powerful, very effective, very cost-effective tool for communicating information, but it wasn't necessarily designed for governments to talk to people. It was designed to be what it is named, social media, people to be interacting socially on the internet. So there's a lot of information that's on social media, and for the county to be able to break our signal through all that noise, we have to use multiple methods and means in order to get our information out there, not just put some text on a Facebook post and say, "Well, that's done," right? Everybody knows about it now. So there's a lot of effort, there's a lot of purpose that goes into developing that content. Just as a quick anecdote, during the pandemic, when we were trying to get people to pay attention to certain information, especially for vaccinations, we did a few memes. People have different opinions about memes, and you have to be careful with it because we don't want to make light of important situations, but we did a meme that took off and was viral. And over a period of a few days, we had over 2 million people see that particular meme about getting vaccinated and the importance of getting vaccinated. And that was huge for us, but one of the things we try to avoid is chasing virality, right? Because it's a false errand, you never know what's going to take off. I didn't think the particular meme that exploded was, it was okay, it was funny, it was clever, but it just blew up. So since you can't plan for it, what we have to be able to do is to make sure that we're hitting lots of singles and not just trying to swing for fences and hit home runs. And so we want to make sure that the posts that we're making are getting 1,500, 2,000, 2,500 reach, and we need to do a lot of those. And in doing a lot of those, and you put them all together, then you're starting to score a lot of runs, and you're getting a lot of information out there. That's important because it creates repetition, and repetition is one of the ways that we can get our signal to punch through the noise and get people to learn about what the county is up to. Now, social media is not our only tool. One of the problems we're having is our audience is segmented and distracted. They are consuming information in many, many different ways. And so for us to be effective, we're going to have to produce information in many, many different ways and deliver it to them, whether it's outdoor, traditional media, new media, digital media, Google Ads, behavioral research, those are those creepy ads that follow you around the internet because you put in a search term. Text messaging, we're looking at all the different opportunities and tools that are out there for us to use to communicate information about the county. Another challenge that we're working on, and I think we made good inroads this year, is our Spanish language outreach. We hired Juan Quiros, who is leading our effort to do outreach in the Spanish language community and to help us be very purposeful and direct in how we're talking to the primarily Spanish-speaking people in our community. You know, what we don't want to be doing is creating a bunch of communications in English and translating them. We need to be producing information that's talking directly to people who primarily speak Spanish, or only speak Spanish, some of them. And Juan's doing a great job with that, and I'm very happy with that, and we hope to make continued inroads in that effort. Another major challenge that I don't have a solution for, but we're exploring and looking for tools that may affect our budget, and perhaps not this budget year, but in future budget years, is trying to overcome that segmentation in the community. One, for instance, if we have a department, say the health department, that just wants to talk to mothers with children, what tools are available to just talk to mothers with children where I'm also not talking to young adult males with no children? And making sure that I'm not wasting time and effort reaching people who don't even get that message? And so we're looking at what's available to us in order to try to reach segmented populations like that. For instance, if we just want to talk to the people in the flowing wells and tell them about a vaccination clinic that we're going to be having in the flowing wells, how do we do that? Among the tools that are available to us is opt-in, out, text messaging, others is direct mail, door-to-door, but that's all very expensive, and so we're looking for other ways that we can do that where there's not going to be a big impact to our budget. Other challenges we have coming up in the year is there's a paper shortage. It's so far not affecting our printing operations, but we produce or mail out over a million pieces of mail a year, and if we can't get the envelopes for that, that's going to make that very difficult. We could go out to the private sector to maybe, if we don't have the supply, maybe they do, but they have some of the same problems that we're having. One of the other things we want to do in the coming years is create a system of data collection for how we measure the efficacy of our messaging. If you come to me and say, "Mark, are you being successful?" I can say, "Well, if you had an event and you needed 100 people there, and I got you 200, we were successful." But if you are trying to reduce the incidence of diabetes in a particular community, and you're putting out a lot of diabetes information to help people change their behavior to protect them from diabetes, that's very difficult to measure, unless you use very sophisticated surveying tools. And so we're looking at acquiring those types of tools in order to do that surveying, so we can measure that type of efficacy. And then the election. I was going to go into a lot of my concerns about the election, however, I'm just going to say to what Recorder Kazaris-Kelly said earlier today, which is ditto, right? Everything she said, I agree with. It's going to be quite a challenge. We have a plan in place, and we're going to be doing a lot of communications to make sure that people know that elections in Pima County are safe and secure and reliable. And then finally, the best news that I have for you, which is going to be the best news that you're going to hear through all these presentations, is pima.gov is getting a complete overhaul this year and will be a responsive webpage that people can actually view on their phones, which is almost half of all of our page views on our website is coming from mobile devices. It's going to be interactive, it's going to be much more engaging, easy to navigate, there'll be improvements in transactional business. It's just going to be the best. A year from now, you're all going to shower me with praise, and the IT department, at how great our new website is. So with that, that concludes my report, and hopefully I got it in under 30 minutes.
All right, any questions?
All right.
Wait, I'm sorry, Chair Bronson, which was the viral one?
I was afraid you'd ask me.
You should have brought a slide.
I was told specifically not to have show and tell.
I love a show and tell.
It was the one of Chris Rock as Maui from Moana versus Rob Schneider.
Okay.
Yeah, so it was, one was your immune system.
No, it was, that's not Chris Rock, it's...
Or not Chris Rock.
Who was he, Mark?
The other Rock.
Yeah. Okay.
The Rock of Gibraltar?
No, no.
No.
It's the guy from Aquaman.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah, that one.
Any other questions?
Yes, thank you, that was funny.
Thanks.
All right, let's move on to elections.
Good afternoon, Chair Bronson, Supervisors, Administrator Lester. Thank you for having me here today. My fifth week here in Pima County, it has been awesome. But I do want to talk a little bit about the Elections Department. And one of the things that most people know about the Elections Department, I'm just going to read what's actually there, is the Elections Department conducts fair, honest, and efficient elections pursuant to all federal and state laws and regulations. So we provide support to all jurisdictions in Pima County. We are the filing office for candidate nominations and campaign finance. So that's what we do, but how do we do it? I have a very small staff, so it's a staff of about 13 people. We're short a couple of people. But Pima County is one of several counties in Arizona that actually programs their own ballots. So the staff in the office actually go through all of the candidates, and they sit down and they program each and every ballot and the voting equipment. So for this election, we have over 1,500 ballots dialed, so that is a very tedious task that happens in about a week. So they take about a week, they go through that, and they program the election. We also are the repository for candidates filing their forms. So we accept your forms, we make sure that you are on the ballot, that your name is printed correctly, and that those ballots are actually protected and distributed properly. We make sure on Election Day that the ballots are secure, and that every voter, every citizen, every eligible citizen of Pima County has the opportunity to cast a ballot for the candidate that they choose, and that those ballots are secured, taken back to central count, and actually processed properly. So in a nutshell, that's actually what we do. So what do we do for the community? So we provide outreach to the community as the presentation about the elections that's coming up with the Vote Center implementation and the electronic poll book. So we provide information to the community and to citizens, to the Board of Supervisors, to the county administration, as to how that is actually going to... to the county administration as to how that is actually going to happen and how it will work. We, we are in the process of updating all of our processes in the Elections Office using the same technology that runs our electronic poll books. With the 10x technology, a suite of applications was purchased to make sure that our office can be more efficient and more effective in the years to come. Some of the efficiencies that we will see are, we will have more efficient and accurate voter check-ins on Election Day. We will reduce printing costs for ballot-on-demand. We will ensure the correct and timely updating of voter records to the Recorder's Office. The next part we will have is asset and inventory control, which is very important. The Elections Office has a lot of assets, and some of those assets are very expensive. And I feel like it's very important that we make sure that we are taking care of those assets, that we know where they are at all times, and that we inventory them. We are in the process of creating a lifecycle for voting equipment and other technologies that we have in the office. The next application that we have is poll worker recruitment and management. Right now, it's a manual process where there's lots of paper and there's a spreadsheet. There are phone calls made to the over 129 vote centers, so there are 129 inspectors. Telephone calls are made to those individuals. Papers are completed, manually filled out, and mailed out to all of the poll workers that work on Election Day. So with the 10x technology, we will be able to automate that process. In addition to that, we receive a lot of recommended poll workers from parties and people who are interested in working that never get contacted. So having this application will allow us to have a pool of people, communicate with those individuals, allow them to know that we did receive their information and that when we need them, we will contact them, instead of them thinking that it just fell in a black hole. So that is one of the enhancements of the software. The other enhancement, you have heard a lot about 10x University. 10x University is an online training platform. With 10x University, we will be able to train poll workers, not just in person, which requires us to secure locations, which can cost $2,000 a day, $3,500 a day to secure a location to actually train poll workers. It will allow us to have more training for poll workers at a reduced cost. We will still have in-person trainings, but this will allow us to have videos for equipment, individualized modules and training where they can go back and take a look at those and update and refresh their training. It will also allow us to create staff training, which is one of the challenges as well. So staff training in the office is very important. Right now, one of the challenges we're facing are, we're short three individuals. So right now, I'm recruiting for a deputy director. I need a supervisor, and then another technician. The jobs in the office were so specialized and so centralized that there wasn't communication throughout the office. So one of the goals and one of the things that this technology will allow us to do is that when someone is onboarded, that they will be given, first, the most important thing they need to know is how to communicate with the public, what the candidates need, how to answer those questions, and make sure that they're answering them correctly. This technology will allow us to, allow them to go through that training, and it will be consistent. They will all get the same message. So they're not getting one thing from someone training them and then something else. It would also allow us to give, provide details on those specialized jobs that are also in the office so that if someone leaves, there's not the void of no one in the office knowing how to do the job. So that technology will help us with that. As well as with Precinct Central, we will have real-time monitoring of issues and problems on Election Day. Not only will we be able to monitor them, we will be able to produce reports and provide statistical analysis of the issues that occurred on Election Day, whether or not it was a printer issue, or whether or not it was a connection issue. Then we can document all of these things and provide that information to the Board of Supervisors and to administration. So these enhancements will benefit the county by streamlining processes and allowing for more accountability of county resources. We will be able to provide better customer service by ensuring that all staff receives consistent and timely training on processes and procedures. In addition to the staffing challenges, we also face the challenge of legislation. So with different legislation, bills being introduced, some being passed, some not being passed, the lawsuit against the Secretary of State and the procedures manual that is going on right now. So those are some of the challenges that we face, that things can change at any time, and we need to be prepared for that. So consistent training is definitely key to making sure that we can adapt to whatever is being put before us. And that is all I have for you today, if you have any questions.
Do we have any questions?
Madam Chair.
Supervisor.
Ms. Hargrove, thank you and welcome to your fifth week in, in Pima County. I think we were very fortunate when you joined us from Virginia, not only given your experience with elections overall, but your specific experience with vote centers and, and e-poll books. I really appreciated what she said a few minutes ago about how you're going to move towards kind of a cross-training model for your staff. Because looking at the numbers in, in your department, you've actually got more vacant positions than filled positions, and you're requesting an additional almost 11 positions for next year. So I wanted to hear a little bit more about the hiring plan, working in conjunction with, with Ms. Leshar to try and fill some of those vacant positions, as well as the new ones that you're, that you're hoping to bring on board.
Absolutely. I am working with Human Resources right now with the deputy position and the supervisor position. There may need to be some reclassification of that position in order for individuals to be able to meet the minimum qualifications. It is very specific to elections, and sometimes that's difficult, getting those individuals to want to move to Pima County and actually take the position. So there are three full-time positions. The other positions, excuse me, the other 10 positions that you see are actually election aides and temporary workers, and that fluctuates based on the election year. And so that's why you see an increase for next year's budget.
Thank you. And I would be remiss if I didn't ask if you've got some updates for us, hopefully positive updates for us on ballot-on-demand printers.
Not yet. The only, the only good news I have is that the vendor did say that they're not concerned about the printers. That's not what's going to take the, the longest amount of time. They're actually installing the air cards in the printers once they get them. So when they ship them, they're ready to go, and we just need to plug them in and sync them up to the, the poll books.
That, that, that sounds promising. Does it? Is it?
Yes. Yes, it does.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. Thank you so much. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Any other questions? Thank you, and again, welcome to Tucson. And it'll be 105 next week, so be prepared. All right, our last presenter, Human Resources.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the board. It's a pleasure to be here today, so I'm excited to give you a lot of news. I'm hearing a lot about recruitment and retention, and I'm excited to talk about that. So first of all, what does HR do? Will we provide human resource functions for all county departments? That's going to be your recruitment, compensation and classification. We have employee relations, which includes ADA, FMLA, ACMD, COVID efforts, complaints, investigations, and policy interpretations. We have benefits and wellness, training and development, records, official personnel files, and oversight of the Merit Commission, Merit Council, and the Health Benefits Trust. What I want to talk about is our accomplishments over the last year. We just finished our onboarding program, which will be a two-and-a-half-day in-person program. Why is that important? It's important because it's been shown that employees who are negatively onboarded have a two-times higher likely of looking for another position. Also, if we do a good job in our onboarding, we can improve our retention of those employees, specifically up to 82%. Now, the big thing I want to talk about today is recruitment, and things that we do in recruitment can also work towards retention. So today I want to talk about what's called the Great Resignation. It might be also called the Great Quit or the Great Reshuffle. In 2021, 84, or I'm sorry, 48 million US workers quit their jobs. In March of this year, according to the Bureau of Statistics, for labor statistics, jobs that were available rose to 11.5 million. Job openings outnumbered unemployed workers by 5.5 million people. So why that's important is because what's happening on a national level, we're seeing happen here. The reason people that are leaving is because of wage stagnation, rising cost of living, job dissatisfaction, COVID-19 concerns, and increased opportunities in the job market. So what does this mean for Pima County? We began to see a large amount of separations beginning in May 2021 to August 2021. Our separations were greater than our hires in July and in August. July, our separations were 166, however, we only hired 108 people. In August, 231 separations, however, we only hired 119 people. I want to go over what our turnover rate has been. From April 2020, when COVID hit, to March of 2021, we've had a 17.8% turnover that in effect is 1,230 separations. The next year, it got worse. From April 2021 to current March 2022, our turnover rate is 23.1%. That's 1,553 separations. Now typically, historically, Pima County's been at about a 13% to 14% turnover rate. We have had 17% in the past. That was like 2017, 2018. We've never seen anything like 23%. So where does that lead us? What have we been doing? Significantly, we've been doing a lot in the last six months. Ms. Leshar had tasked HR to come up with some recruitment strategies and to work with the deputy county administrators. So to that effort, what we have done is we have hired what we call talent acquisition employees. Now, what we have done historically is very passive. We expect people to recognize us as an employer and want to come here. We weren't doing anything active to go out and look for these people and search for them. That's what we're doing now. We are turning those efforts around. We've joined LinkedIn, which we've never been a part of before. That's where we got Ms. Hargrove. So we're actually looking in this database for people that have the skill sets we want, actively reaching out to them. An account with Indeed.com. We can also look there for employees. We're doing candidate sourcing, which is mining our own database. We have NeoGov, which houses thousands of applications. We've not taken advantage of literally going in there, matching up people, locating people that have the skill sets of what we need. So take, for, for instance, if you're doing an interview panel and you hire one person, we don't hire the applicant number two or number three, but we're also not reaching out to them to see what other position could they qualify for, as well as people that don't meet the minimum qualifications. So we're going to start using some of this material and try to locate people. Ms. Leshar also asked that we do job fairs and that we collaborate with the city of Tucson. So we have done two so far. The first one was January. We had over 700 people attend. The next one was April, over 400 people attended. We've also done a job fair last month with Pima Community College. Today, we're out with KVOA television station. One of the things that we also did that will help with our recruitment efforts, I know there's no show and tell, but this is a total compensation statement. I can't take ownership with it, or of it, I should say. Finance and ADG helped immensely. This is a great recruitment tool. So while this, for example, will tell us that the employee salary is $53,492, in essence, when we add all the benefits to it, we can see that Pima County has invested $78,469 into this employee. That's 69% wages, and that's 31% in benefits. As a result of these efforts, we've seen a difference. From January 1st to April 30th, we've had 9,945 applications. That's an increase of 42.6% over the previous period last year. We are processing approximately 585 applications a week. We have hired, in that same time span, 764 employees. That's a 63% increase over the same time period in 2021. The other thing that we've been doing is our comp and class has been doing market studies. We did 75 market studies last year. This affected several positions, a few that are of importance, attorneys, nurses, epidemiologists, architects, engineers, 911 call-takers, and dispatchers. Now, I want to talk to you about one of our challenges, and I think one thing that's really important today, our Health Benefit Trust. Our trust reserves are projected to be down 3.4 million by the end of this fiscal year compared to the end of last fiscal year. Last fiscal year, we ended at 16.9. We're projected to be at 13.5. Now, what's the reason for the increases? Is going to be the increase in medical claims. We are getting less revenue, and there's more high-cost claimants. The increase in medical claims is up 16% compared to this time last year. We have a decrease in the employees participating in the plan. Typically, we have 5,131 in a plan year. Currently, we have 4,921 employees that are in the plan. So that's a difference of just over 200. So that's revenue that's not going into the trust. The other issue is the high-cost claimants. A high-cost claimant is somebody who has claims that are in excess of $100,000. We track these in HR along with our consultant, and we are experiencing an 84% increase in the number of high-cost claimants, which account for 34% of our total paid claims. Now, last plan year, we had 25 high-cost claimants. This plan year, so far, we have 46. What's important to note is that if we look at the rolling year, we have 56, and just since our last quarterly meeting, we have 21 new folks that meet that criteria. So we have increased the premiums. They increased by 11.48%. I don't know that that's going to be enough to offset what we're seeing. That generates just a million over, a million dollars in revenue. So on to, what are our goals going forward? Well, it's recruitment. It's retention. What can we do? And some of those things you've already done, the education reimbursement, the parental leave, the alternate work schedule, the relocation assistance. Those are all things that we can build upon. We're going to be expanding our branding. You're going to start seeing it on county vehicles that we're hiring, working with people in the community and schools as far as apprenticeship programs, community job training with Job Path. Another area that we're going to be working on is training. So we have them providing supervisor training. We're also going to be purchasing, or have purchased, a Ken Blanchard series of trainings for our supervisors. People that have good supervisors tend to stay, and so we want to make sure that they are well-trained. The other area that I want to expand on this year is we did onboarding and we did supervisors, but we haven't talked about current employees, and I heard that here today. What can we do to strengthen their skills? What can we do to provide them something that's going to make them want to stay with Pima County? that's going to make them want to stay with Pima County? We're also working on creating an appreciation program that goes directly to retention. We're also in the final stages of the RFP for the compensation study. So that has taken us an extraordinary long time to secure, and that's because of the overwhelming amount of work that they have. And we haven't been able to find folks that have been able to do this until now. So I feel confident that we should be coming back in June to you with a proposed contract. The other thing too, just like the other departments, we're working on the system upgrade. That's going to take a lot of time and resources for Human Resources. We also have a new platform for the wellness. It's called Virgin Pulse. That's going to come to you at your next meeting. That's an electronic platform, so we can do away with all of the manual processes for when we count these points for the wellness program. So with that, I thank you for this opportunity and welcome any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Any questions?
Madam Chair.
Supervisor.
Can, Ms. Boland, can we please get regular updates on your recruitment and retention efforts and any refinements and strategy? And also, given the dire concerns you've expressed about the Health Benefits Trust Fund, some regular updates on that as well, especially the high-cost claimants and their status that you referred to?
Absolutely. So we actually have the tactics right here. There's 35 of them pending. I'm happy to share that with you.
Please. Thank you.
And then I'll put something together with the high-cost claimants.
And thank you for your presentation and all your hard work.
You're welcome.
All right. Are there any further questions?
No. Chair Bronson, I'm just, again, wanted to echo Supervisor Scott about the turnover and vacancies countywide. I mean, every department that we spoke to, aside from these budget meetings, all had concerns about their vacancies, the level of experience of people coming in, you know, what, and so it is, although some departments have more issues than others, I think overall, you know, trying to make sure we have qualified people. So what partnerships are we creating with our school districts, with JTED, with University of Arizona, Pima Community College, all those certificated programs to make sure that people coming out of college or having gone through the transition to retrain into jobs that are not available anymore post-pandemic have options in Pima County because we need them and we'd like to keep, give them an option. We have, I do think that we're making inroads with offering enhanced benefits, the tuition reimbursement and, you know, flexible work schedules, getting more creative about those things, I think is going to be really helpful. Because I went to a conference where they said, you know, the average high school graduate right now, by the time they turn, like in their mid-30s, are going to have 14 different jobs. That's not something that is in my wheelhouse of like normal. I stayed at one job for 25 years and then moved here. So, you know, to try to understand like what young people are looking for, the work-life balance, it is so important. So I think it's important that we look at all of those options. We just have to think about things differently if we want to stay competitive with people that are looking for opportunities.
Absolutely.
And I know that I'm glad that you all, it's on everyone's radar, but just to sort of put another kind of point to it, we do have to get really creative, I think.
Yep.
Thanks.
All right. Any further questions? Thank you, Kathy. And that brings us to call to the public. Do we have public here that want to be called? No? Well, if that's the case, then without objection, this meeting stands adjourned. We'll resume tomorrow at 9:00 AM.